It's now time to reconvene the public hearing at the regular council meeting. I'm going to ask that Mr. Mike Marquardt, if he afforded the opportunity to do a presentation, which he's going to address me as the concerns that were expressed in the previous meeting, then we're going to open the floor up for those who have signed up. Those of us not signed up, I'll still give you the opportunity to do so at this time. Mr. Marquardt.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Councilman, good afternoon. Following last week's presentation, there were some very good and directed questions asked. We've tried to put together a presentation tonight that hopefully will clear those up. These power supply agreements are very technically weighted agreements. I've tried to reduce that and hopefully I'll try not to be bogged down in numbers accordingly. The first topic we discussed last week is, we looked at options and one of the biggest blockades to any possible option aside from a continued partnership with CLECO was transmission constraints, and we'll talk about why that is. The city is situated in the approximate center of CLECO's transmission system. Beyond CLECO's transmission system, the transmission system is almost wholly owned by energy. The regional transmission grid, especially the energy system, is currently taxed and in need of significant capital investment. Moving power on a firm, which means uninterrupted basis, which means that if I enter into a buy-sell agreement with a merchant power plant and they agree to deliver power to the city of Alexandria, that power will always be here and they can never say, "We can't deliver it." So that's the only contract that we feel comfortable entering into would be one that always guarantees that power is available. Through the energy system is a formidable challenge. To give you an example, we asked, looked at getting 10 megawatts firm. When you do that, you make a transmission application and eventually there's an agreement entered into called a NITS, which is Network Integrated Transmission Service. We'll talk about that later. There's some studies done, some costing done, but Energy said, "That's fine. To move that 10 megawatts across our system will cost the city of Alexandria somewhere between $1 and $56 million." To meet our full requirement, we could need to import as much as 120 megawatts. So that kind of sets the cost, the costing. To secure power from a source other than CLECO, the city will be required to purchase both the power and the firm transmission rights, again, without the firm transmission. There's no guarantee that it can get here. We can have the best deal in the world, but without the transmission, it can't be delivered. Firm power with an acceptable reliability of delivery would be available only after the completion of a system impact study and a facility study, followed by the execution of a NITS agreement. So when you make a transmission application, that application is reviewed by the regional liability organization and the affected utilities. They enter into a system impact study. That's a somewhat low-level, quick study. If that study doesn't reveal any problems, then you can move forward with the transmission application. If it reveals problems, you move into a more detailed study called a facility study and you identify what facilities owned by that utility are negatively impacted by your transmission request and what capital investment is necessary to correct that. Yet, the question was asked last week, "What about open access transmission tariffs?" They do exist. Access is mandatory, but we as the purchaser has to absorb the cost to construct the necessary transmission upgrades to deliver the power. As an example, CLECO recently sold $100 million in bonds to begin construction of transmission improvements in south-central Louisiana, what's commonly referred to as the Acadiana Lode Pocket. You have generation resources down there, generation resources that were constructed in the last five to six years that can't be fully utilized because there's not enough transmission to get the power out. Should the city exhaust, and I think it leads us into a question. The city has, as any municipality does, and we're certainly in a much better financial position than many municipalities, we have a good fund balance, we have a good balance sheet, and we have a good credit rating. Does it make sense for us to expand our bonding capacity, improve in a third-party's electric system, most likely out of state? Or would those dollars be better spent inside our corporate limits? Another question asked last week, the fuel cost calculation, looking at the current method versus, excuse me, the proposed method. Currently, the city pays the highest incremental cost from CLECO's generation portfolio, net of market purchases. There is some power that CLECO purchases on the market beyond that. The power comes from CLECO's generation portfolio, meaning their fleet of generating units. Normally wholesale customers are assigned the highest-cost piece from that generation portfolio under their wholesale contract, usually that being high heat rate natural gas generation. So you have less efficient generation being generated by what's been the most expensive fuel lately. Under the proposed agreement, the city has charged CLECO's average system cost. This approach allows the city to take advantage of all of CLECO's generation portfolio, both gas and solid fuel. With the new Roadmaker 3 coming online, their solid fuel portion is increasing, as well as economy market purchases. It also reduces our dependence on natural gas. In rough numbers, currently, 40% of our, the city's power comes from solid fuel, 60 from natural gas. This proposal will reverse that. You would have about 60% solid fuel, 40% natural gas. Again, we still retain broad audit and challenge rights. We can look at the numbers, we can question the numbers, the numbers can be explained to us so that we can understand what's going on and we, the situation we have at hand that led to the original litigation couldn't be repeated under those challenge rights and audit rights. Real quickly, briefly, I'm not going to explain this. This is the sheet that we receive daily from CLECO. It's our power scheduling worksheet that shows their market purchases. You can see they bought a block of power here for all day for $42.37 a megawatt. They also bought some other purchases throughout the day, anywhere $29.41 to $37.50 a megawatt. The balance over and above our LEPA capacity, which is right here at 54, and when our high power is available, that balance comes from CLECO special. And what I want to point out is that's the highest incremental cost of their portfolio. That's $66 power, where they've been able to buy us power on the open market during the day for as low as $29. So we're moving away from that element, and that's how we do the most good for our work. This is taken directly from the PSA. This is the fuel cost calculation sheet and the fuel cost calculation formula. I'm not going to certainly bog anyone down in looking at it. It just simply shows you that it is, it is CLECO's total cost of fuel divided by the total amount of megawatt-hours generated. So we're getting a true system average of CLECO's entire generated and purchased portfolio. The city is no longer carved out and treated separately. We should receive the same treatment as a regulated rate base.
Mr. Marquardt, if I may, I think one of the questions as we hear the presentation going on is for the citizens of the community to understand as you move through the next phase, is the change on utility bills based, fuel costs based on the new power supply agreement? And based on where we're headed, when will residents see a change in fuel costs only in utility bills based on Mr. Lawson? Because I think that's one of the things, I really just want to hear it.
That's a very fair question, Mr. Johnson.
I'm going to let Mr., certainly answer that question, but we're going to go ahead and let him finish after this question. We're going to open up to the council first and then to those of us signing up.
That's right. If I could, Mr. Lawson, let me back up just a second and point out that the, under the audit and challenge rights, it will not just be the city assisting, performing that analysis. We will retain RW Beck and their professional services to audit it. They helped set up these systems. Certainly, they'd be the best one. They're nationwide, very well-recognized, probably the best in the industry. So we have, we have a stellar team in place. I hate to say a dream team, but we have a good team in place. I think the most important thing is this proposal breaks the mold for standard wholesale power agreements. We talked about standard wholesale power agreements where the wholesale customer receives the most expensive element from their generation portfolio. This gives us a system average. We're treated just like a regulated customer is. Another question last week, performance penalties. How firm is this contract? Could it easily be broken? What are the penalties if it were broken? These are taken from, directly from the PSA, and I'll hit the high points. The rates, terms, and charges under the proposal are those listed in the contract only, meaning any change can only come about as a result of the procedures bargained for and listed specifically in the contract. There can be no arbitrary adjustments or unjustified adjustments. If CLECO seeks a rate increase and intends to pass the cost to its customers, they have to get approval from the PSC. They have to provide the city with all the data and the detailed calculations to justify the increase, and the idea being, if they want a rate increase in the demand charge, it would be because they brought a more efficient generation asset online. They would need an increase in the demand charge to offset the capital cost of that generation asset, but on the backside, the cost savings in generated power would more than offset the demand charge increase. We can challenge any pass-through, any data, any calculation or analysis to determine any charge under the contract with a five-year statute of limitation as opposed to a 30-day period under the old agreement. Again, that's something we could request Beck services on if needed. The city has access to all documents and information necessary to evaluate changes or charges under the contract with 10 days' notice to CLECO. We can exercise our challenge rights and protest any changes. CLECO must respond within 30 days, or the city can seek redress before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission or in U.S. District Court. Again, we talked about audit rights. If we call for an audit, this is similar to the original matter before the court. If the parties cannot agree on an auditor, each party submits two names to the district judge, who then selects the independent auditor. In the event of breach, and I think this is probably the most important thing, if CLECO were to breach the contract, the city has a right to demand specific performance. That means we have the right to demand that they return and perform their obligation under the contract, and we can recover the damages associated with CLECO's failure to perform. So if they ceased performing under the contract and the result was a net 10% increase to the citizens, we could recover that 10% increase from CLECO as a damage. Other alternatives, why did we return to CLECO? Well, we looked at other alternatives. We looked at repowering DG Hunter with current natural gas technology, repowering DG Hunter with a solid fuel technology, probably coal, running the plant in its current configuration, or securing a new PSA through a RFP process, essentially taking a bid and finding another provider. Again, the caveat there is, you have to get the transmission rights with it, and that is because of our position in the regional transmission grid. That is the highest hurdle we have to cross. All of these alternatives would require significant capital investment. They would exhaust a substantial portion of our bonding capacity, and they would seriously limit our ability to fund other needed utility infrastructure improvements in the city. So I believe it's a balancing act. How much do we invest in the electric system? We have that much less to invest in the three other major utilities. The current PSA's been extended through March of 2010. Beyond that, we don't have a power supply arrangement, and we would be either running DG Hunter or moved into a situation where we would be making market purchases of our own. We would assume additional regulatory functions and probably I would have to add a staff of about five people to deal with those issues. That's the end of the presentation. I'll go ahead and address Mr. Johnson's question, and if I understood you correctly, Mr. Johnson, you asked, "When would the savings actually be on the bills, essentially?"
Right. When will the customer actually see a lower rate based on the power supply agreement also with fuel costs? And I think while I'm speaking also, from a perspective of citizens across the city, I guess, cut to the chase, they're going to hear two things. A lower utility bills and also the concern about rebates. And I think that's been a big question coming to this council. We hear these questions all the time as we sit here and you give a great presentation again. People want to know that. People want to know, "A lower utility bill? Know if they're going to get a rebate check versus that."
Right, okay. And we'll take the actual utility bill question first. This agreement, if the council authorizes the mayor to enter into it tonight, has a maximum six-month implementation period. There are some what's called, referred to in the agreement as conditions precedent, some other opinions and contract amendments that have to be ratified. None of those are big deals, are procedural issues. Once we enter into the contract and we begin purchasing power off of that, fuel costs usually in charges on the bill lag two months behind the purchase date. So let's just assume that we began purchasing off of this on May 1, the July 1 bill would be the time. Let's just say it would be two months after the actual purchases begin under the contract and recognizing that that process could take up to six months, we think it'll take 90 days in actuality. As far as the rebate question, I believe that's a fair question, but that's a question that we've chosen to set aside until we look at whether or not we adopt the agreement. Then if we adopt the agreement, I think you return to that question, and that's something that the administration along with the council has to make a recommendation.
And I want to be clear on that because I know the question to eliminate it before it come up, and I'm not eliminating, but clarifying, maybe some of the question. The vote tonight, one way or the other, does not have anything to do with whether or not we decide to give rebates or not to give rebates. It's been suggested and I'm considering additional hearing for that. So whether a person gets money back will not be determined tonight on, this is about the power, the PSA. This is what this is about.
This is about authorizing the mayor to enter into contract.
But, let me say something.
And we're going to start with Mr. Laberding.
But, but once we authorize the mayor to resolve, this matter will be over, is that correct? So tonight, yeah, the power supply, the loss will be over if we agree to it tonight, is that correct?
The litigation would be ended as part of this agreement, yes.
How much money have we paid to RW Beck? And how much will we be paying them throughout the term of the agreement?
Today, we probably spent, I'd estimate, I'd say $1.3 to $1.4 billion. That's just an estimate. I can give you the exact figure tomorrow.
And how much will we be paying them a year?
Well, they don't charge us by the year. They charge us by the hour, and it's based on the team that they use for that particular issue. They have some people at RW Beck who are economists, they have some other ones who are engineers, they have varying hourly rates. And on one particular project, say the transmission study that Mike talked about, you would have several of each working on that project. And to be able to get it finished in a timely fashion, you're going to have six to seven people working on it at a time.
Okay. Thus far, let me ask another quick question, real quick. Thus far, how much money have we spent on this CLECO this year, on this case? With attorneys, everybody?
Attorneys and consultants. We paid John O'Dragnan approximately $140,000. We paid Trey Gist about $35,000. Now, this is total.
Total.
Total, not just this year, this is total. We've paid Brazil Saxon Wilson, who are the lead litigation counsel if the matter goes to litigation. We've still been preparing this case in case the negotiations fail through. We've spent about $66,000, $67,000 with Brazil Saxon. And that's, all of those figures are total for four years.
Okay. Mr. Councilman, Larry. We'll go to Councilman Fowler. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Councilman Johnson, any questions? Councilman Hobbs.
Mr. Johnson, I don't know if you have, you have a copy of the document?
Yeah.
Okay. On page 6, with the credit and collateral requirements, the capacity payment, and the line of credit. I just need a little more explanation on it. And the part I, the part I'm saying, if we propose to take an upfront payment, then in return, we got to give them that amount back in the line of credit?
No, no, no. The way that works, Mr. Hobbs, is the total amount of the capacity credit is $29 million.
Right.
The city, if we breached the contract, CLECO would then tap the letter of credit as security for this contract. CLECO insisted that we have a provision like that in here as standard in the industry for these types of agreements. If they were going to advance $29 million, they want to make sure that we complete the contract. Their concern was that we would take the $29 million and then breach the contract in the second year, and then they'd be out $29 million. The...
But it reduces that.
Yeah, it reduces, yes. Our exposure reduces as we go through the term. And that would be a choice too, Mr. Hobbs. That's entirely up to the council. Whether to take it, how much to take, when to take it, that's your decision.
Councilman Silver.
Mr. Johnson. If we settle tonight, what method do we use to come back and discuss rebates?
My suggestion would be the same as Mr. Lawson's. I think tonight, the council should decide whether to approve the power supply agreement or not, and then come back and have separate hearings to decide if you want to have a rebate. How would you disperse the rebate? Who would get the rebate? Those are issues that are really not germane to what we're here to decide today. There's nothing to rebate if you don't approve the agreement because we won't have any money to give back to the citizens. So today, we're just here to decide if the council's going to approve the actual contract.
I see, Councilman Johnson's agenda.
Mr. Marquardt, if you can refer to Exhibit A on Page 60 of ADU 1, on the Alexandria monthly charges, it talks about the monthly customer charges should be $400 and the monthly demand charge. Can you just touch on that, what that means just a little bit?
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson. Again, these are charges that would be billed to the city. These would not be individual customer charges in the sense, the city's the customer here, not an individual rate payer. Let me make that clarification. Again, it's just, this is a common rate structure. There's always a base charge of $400. They follow the common rate model and they negotiate a $400 base charge for service. The monthly demand charges, those are the capacity charges such that this is a full requirements contract from CLECO, meaning they'll deliver everything we need net of our LEPA and SWAPA allotments. The demand charge is the charge for us, to CLECO, to always have enough generation available, including the spinning reserves. And remember, we talked last week that you always have to have 12% above your expected load available as reserve capacity to have those services available. Also provides regulatory services, balancing authority, some NERC and FERC compliance issues.
Okay. I think most of the questions have been satisfied.
One more question. Mr. Johnson, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of concern about the letter of credit. Typically, what does a letter of credit cost? And in this arrangement, who would pay for it?
The industry standard is one basis point, 1%. Under the contract, the interest payment will be made by CLECO up to 1%. If it cost us more than that, then the city would be responsible for any level above that. Now, Mr. Crutchfield and myself have kind of felt out several financial institutions, including the one across the street from us, and should we get bond commission approval for the actual contract? Capital One has agreed to supply the line of credit at that percentage, so it wouldn't cost us anything. That cost would be CLECO's, unless it got above 1%.
One other question. If we decide to take the DG Hunter capacity payment incrementally over the 13 years, we would not have to furnish a letter of credit? Is that correct?
The scenario that I envision, Mr. Fowler, is that we would only have to keep a letter of credit available for the amount that we actually drew down on. Say if in the first year, the council decided to only take $2 million, then I think we should only have to post a letter of credit for $2 million. There's no reason why we should have to put up a $29 million letter of credit when we haven't drawn the entire thing down. Those are some policy choices that this body is going to have to make in consultation with Mr. Crutchfield because there may be some accounting issues that y'all feel would be best resolved in a way fiscally that we do it over a period of years, but that'll be for the council to decide.
Just options to explore.
Yes, yes. There are many options to explore.
While we're talking about the $29 million, is it not correct that any of that money can be invested during that period to be down for the benefit of the city?
You mean, do we have to take it? I don't understand the question.
That $29 million can be turned investment to us?
Yes, yes. The council's free to use that money for whatever you want to. If you want to use it for infrastructure upgrades, other city projects, capital...
Let's just assume we leave it in tax so we can just amortize it. We can still invest it and enjoy what we get from it.
If you want to just put it in certificates of deposits.
Help defray other expenses, that's what we want.
Let it gain interest, you can do that too, yes.
Councilman Laberding.
Use it for drainage. You can. Now, let me go back to the money. You said that, Mr. Johnson, Chuck?
Yes, sir.
The city is going to be receiving 29 million from the use of the BG Hunter plan, is that correct? And then you have the other speculative money, is that correct?
The $29 million is for the purchase of the capacity of DG Hunter over that 13-year period, the initial term of the contract. The city can elect to take it upfront as cash, or if the council chooses not to take it, we get a generation credit wherein CLECO would be paying us for it. These are all policy issues that y'all can decide in the next couple of weeks.
And then you have some other money out there that's pretty much speculative money, is that correct?
You talking about the savings?
Yeah. And so that's really not...
I don't think it's...
There's really not much, just speculative savings, is that correct?
I disagree. I don't think it's speculative at all. RW Beck is the number-one utility consultant in the industry. I think even CLECO would recognize that. Our own experts have seen the KPMG report. They've done their own analysis of the KPMG report. They've done their own damage assessment.
Explain the relationship of the KPMG report with RW Beck report and how they...
KPMG was a report that was compiled by an auditor who was appointed by the judge. When that auditor finished the report, that actual KPMG report, we had our own firm, RW Beck, look at that and do an analysis of it to determine if they thought the analysis and the underlying hypotheses were correct. Our own people, RW Beck, did that. Based upon that, they came up with the range of damages that Mr. Marquardt discussed last week. The $60 million figure, as the mayor said, we believe encompasses what our damages would be in a loss, at a minimum.
Did I answer your question? Mr. Lawson, if I could, let me follow up. The opportunity in this contract, Mr. Laberding, is to get away from this highest-cost element here and move down and we're getting more benefit of these cheaper elements. And that's, the savings are not speculative because we know Roadmaker 3 is coming online. We know that's more solid fuel generation. We know that's cheaper.
But isn't it based on the market? If you've got Pet Coke, you've got lignite, it's just based on... But isn't it based on the market? If you've got Pet Coke, you've got lignite, it's just based on the price of the market at a particular time?
That's correct.
So, in some words, it is speculative.
But solid fuel generation is always cheaper than natural gas generation. So, it is speculative, but it's also relative.
We flipped our source from 60 to 40.
It's risk, and the best way to describe it is it's risk management. It is what it boils down to.
We've made our peaks and valleys. We've narrowed them. I think what we're going to say is, because of the land that we have now, more consistent rate. That would be a below-marking rate.
Yes, sir. And I think, remember, we've broken the mold. Most wholesale customers don't get this deal.
Most people here confused. They don't have a clue what's going on.
I understand.
We're going to be here until the sun comes up in the morning. That's the question. That's what we get paid for.
In three-minute increments.
That's right, three minutes. We can have a whole lot of three minutes. I think we satisfied the questions here. I'm going to get started with those that have signed up first, but I'm going to give the opportunity to our illustrious state representative in District B, the Honorable Herbert Dixon, to say hello to him, if he cares to. I said 26, didn't I? We want to thank you. I alluded to the group that we've been talking about, the drainage issues, and that you certainly championing alleviating those problems that we have experienced in the last several months, and I thank you for that. Go ahead, I got him up there.
I want to thank you, President Lawson and the council members, for this opportunity, and I am going to be brief. And certainly, working with the council, the administration, and the other area legislators in this area, we are going to have to tackle the drainage problems, and there are certainly a multitude of suggestions as to how we need to do that. But I think we are narrowing exactly how we can approach this in a unified way. So, I stand ready, along with I know my peers are in the legislature, to work cooperatively with the council and the mayor and the parish to get this job done. So, because one thing is sure. If in this last ice rain that we had, and you have individuals that are going through renovations of their homes in different areas of the city, we certainly can't stand another flood and have those people repeat this effort. So, we're going to have to work, and we're going to have to do this as fast as we possibly can. So, I'm glad that the council and administration is taking the initiative to move us forward in this direction, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Representative Dixon. We have, first up, Mr. Mike Redman, and his reason for discussion is drainage with slash CLECO. So, we'll deal with the CLECO side of it. We'll do CLECO, okay?
I'm Mike Redman. Help keep the DG Hunter plant. When we turn it over, are we going to turn it over to CLECO, or are we going to maintain it ourselves?
We'll still own and operate it just as we do today.
So, at the end of the period of time, the plant will still be in the same condition it is right now?
That's right. We have a staff there every day. We'll continue to have that staff there every day.
Okay, when water, Rotomaker comes online, will that drop our costs down? As far as the fuel... For the people getting their money's worth on the bill.
Yes, sir, because that goes into CLECO's generation mix. And again, remember, we're getting a system average. We're no longer getting that highest-cost element. And solid fuel is generally always cheaper than natural gas generation. Plus, those are top-of-the-line units with the best possible efficiency.
Okay, another question is...
And I want to clarify something before we get off of it. You said Rotomaker coming online, quote-unquote. Now, we don't want to get an impression that Rotomaker's going to be running. Is that what you're talking about?
We're talking about the new plant.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I'm thinking DG Hunter, I'm sorry.
I just wondered if it was going to be dropping our rates down more.
Yes, sir.
Directly tied to it.
What's the difference between the contract you're talking about today versus the contract that we had offered to us at the beginning?
At the beginning of...
Of the negotiations with CLECO.
Maybe more of a legal question.
Actually, Mr. Redman, this is the culmination of two years of work. CLECO had never offered us an actual power contract when this dispute first started. The whole process, well, you want me to break it down for you, explain to you exactly how it happened? You had the KPMG report, RW Beck did an analysis of that report. RW Beck did a transmission study. After that, the lawyers got together and we did what's called a memorandum of understanding. In the memorandum of understanding, we set out what we believe to be our goals that we wanted to achieve if there was an ultimate settlement proposal in the case. Since that time, including the power supply negotiations, and I mean literally, week to week, sitting down, going through line by line, page by page, we came up with this document right here. All of the goals that we sought in the memorandum of understanding, which was approved by the council, are encompassed in this document right here. So, if you're asking me, do I think we got everything we asked for, I would say yes.
Three minutes. As you end, this is three minutes. Three minutes. Next, we have Mr. Patrick Lacour.
Good evening, Patrick. Thank you for letting us come tonight and ask questions. My first question goes to Mr. Mark. In the negotiations, this is in regards to the transmission donut, the so-called transmission donut. What discussions did you have with RW Beck about a Section 205 FERC filing?
Repeat that?
What discussions did you have with RW Beck about a potential Section 205 FERC filing?
Now, if you would do that in layman's language, I'd just stand for it.
What is it?
Well, we talked about the transmission donut. Before I go on and explain it, I'd like to know if they have had that discussion?
We've had numerous discussions, and I'd actually have to review my notes to detail you exactly what sections of every FERC regulation were discussed, Mr. Lacour.
Does anyone else in the administration want to speak to Section 205? Okay, we talked about the transmission...
Can you tell us what Section 205 is?
We talked about the transmission, the so-called transmission donut. The OATT is an open-access transmission tariff. It's provided so that you're not, there is monopoly power by a, someone who used to have monopoly power of those transmission lines. In 1992, Congress opened up the transmission lines to give cities like the City of Alexandria an opportunity not to get into a transmission donut like what's been asserted here by the administration. So, if CLECO or Entergy either acting separately or together are telling you that you cannot get power in here, the very same power that they bring in here, then you can file a Section 205 with FERC and ask FERC to come in and declare them a monopoly, and then force them to give you the access that you're supposed to have at the rates that they pay. So, there are ways that you can get around transmission donuts, so-called transmission donuts. I said it the last meeting, I'm going to say it again. CLECO does not have enough generation to supply its own load, much less the City of Alexandria. CLECO has to import power from other places. That power comes on the same lines that the City of Alexandria could employ a third party to do it. I realize it's difficult probably to get that. It's harder, because it's going to require you to fight more. You may have to go to the FERC and ask the FERC to be on your side. But in one week, we've asked the public to look at this deal and give comments, and I've come to, and I appreciate that you have, but it's only been one week. We haven't had a very, what I would consider, an appropriate time for the public to comment on this. And if I'm in here mentioning the Section 205 for the first time, and RW Beck, we've spent $1.3 million with RW Beck, and nobody from the administration can even speak to the potential Section 205 filing, I would argue that...
Okay, we're going to let it finish. I'm going to ask the mayor of the administration to come forward and address that issue, as to whether it's been properly addressed. And I think, I'm going to let you wrap up, because I've been kind of generous with your three minutes.
You asked me, I would rather have gone forward, because I think by talking about the 205, I gave them the answer to the 205. I would prefer just to move on and discuss some other issues, like the $29 million. They've been talking about an upfront payment of $29 million.
Okay, you going to ask a question, or you going to make...
Okay, my question is, the Hibernian Bank, okay? They've now said that they will give you the letter of credit for 100 basis points, which shouldn't cost the city any money. But are they going to require, would there be any restricted cash? Is the city going to have to post, in other words, you're going to have assets tied to that letter of credit? Or is the letter of credit going to be free so that you can't spend the money? Because I heard Mr. Johnson say that, I heard Mr. Johnson say that the council's free to spend that $29 million. But if you were to default on that letter of credit, if you've already spent $29 million, Hibernian is going to ask you for some portion of that back, depending on when it is, so...
Mr. Lacour, I think the council understands how a letter of credit works. They know that the city would have to replenish any amount if we defaulted on the contract and CLECO tapped it, and I'd ask you not to insult their intelligence, please.
I don't, excuse me, did I insult anyone here on the council's intelligence?
Yes.
No, I didn't, I wasn't offended by that.
Let me do this. We have an opportunity for, we have an opportunity. I want to hear everyone. Time permits, we're going to give an opportunity. Do you have any other burning question as you go?
Just the $29 million. That was not discussed in the PowerPoint presentation last week. That letter of credit was not discussed. All that was discussed was an upfront $29 million payment. If you're a regular Alexandria citizen, you would have thought that we were going to get $29 million free and clear. But that's not really the case. We have to turn around and get $29 million. The first year, we have to get $29 million back to CLECO. The second year, that letter of credit goes down to $28 million.
Thank you, Mr. Lacour.
Mayor, do you mind? Just to take the first issue.
I'm going to ask the mayor to come up, Mr. Johnson.
Just to take the first, the first issue about Section 205, I didn't find anything to be particularly insulting about what Mr. Lacour said. I would say it's a bit presumptuous to assume that he told the room what it meant and that we would not have known but for those comments. Section 205 was something discussed in the litigation in this case over and over in a lot of ways, and it has to do with, it goes to the very heart of some of the issues that led to these very problems that we're having. In fact, when you get into some of the major allegations, that issue comes up again in numerous ways. But I think some of this is sort of a half-telling of the story, when you talk about constraint. We've talked to some people who are industry leaders and have no vested interest in this one way or another, other than finding out what's best for the city. And those folks disagree with some of the analysis that Mr. Lacour has provided. It's easy if you're in the industry and you're a former employee of CLECO to stand up and point out each thing that using a technical term can make a room go one way or another and think, well, why isn't this being answered? It's quite another thing to have to go through the process for years and go through those issues. A Section 205, I specifically recall, was discussed in the meetings. Mr. Mark was not involved in this case until the last few months that process had been done, probably a full year before Mr. Mark came on board in meetings in Orlando, Florida. A Section 205 first came about, in my mind, knowledge of that, in litigation that I was involved in. It's not this case, but another case. And it came up with the very allegations that some folks had made against this company and other companies. And so, it is not new, Mr. Lacour, with all due respect to me, but it is a highly technical term that you could spend a day discussing and still have people scratching their head. We were asked to address seven questions the other day, and from what I hear from the public now, and those would be, "The public wishes to have the value of the case unbundled in a manner so that it is understood about how the city arrived at the settlement value being discussed." So, unbundling $60 million. Why that number? That was one question that I heard asked by Reverend Green and by Sybil the other day. Number two, at least one member of the public, and that was Mr. Lacour, expressed concern on the city explaining OAT, or OATT, and issues having to do with transmission constraint. Now, again, these are one of those things where you can mince words. Mr. Lacour has expressed there's no such thing as, or in this case, we're not transmission constrained, or perhaps that he used the term so-called, or we're really not. It is a term of art, but it's not such a term of art that there's a generally accepted definition for everybody. I've talked to three other people, colleagues of folks that have been involved in this, and they all understand the term to mean something. They feel we are transmission constrained. It doesn't mean, and this is sort of the half-telling of the story. To use Mr. Lacour's analogy about it, I think that is true. You can get the power here, and I want the public to understand that. No one in the administration has ever said or is telling you, you can't get it here. What we're saying is there are costs and risks that go with getting the power here, things that you can't fully know today. And so, you have to decide whether your risk tolerance, if you will, in this case, is really on the side where Mr. Lacour thinks you would risk those things, go to court, or if you think that maybe there are some other alternatives. Then you have to weigh into that process all the costs that go into that versus the agreement that's on the table. I would say, Mr. Lawson, that there are several alternatives before you would even get to the alternative that Mr. Lacour is approaching. One would be, and remember, RW Beck was paying, Mr. Lawverdane, that $1.4 million. That, by the way, for the public, includes other items than just CLECO. So, it was not limited to that. We have other utility issues that aren't just about the electric utility. But there were at least two least-cost alternatives before you would even get to what Mr. Lacour is talking about. One was the upgrade of DG Hunter with natural gas turbines. The second was, and these were both discussed by Mr. Mark, the other was the use of upgrades with solid fuel, most particularly coal. Examples of solid fuel are petroleum coke byproduct that you'll hear us commonly call Pet Coke. A Pet Coke plant like what's coming on. You can use other solid fuels. There are all kinds of things out there, believe it or not, that are compressed over time or under immense pressure and can be burned, and they have value. Petroleum coke byproduct, years ago, there was a big fight in the legislature because some smart folks knew that this day was coming when it would be burned, and they successfully fought. I see my wife nodding. She remembers when I was working there, when this battle came about. There were a few folks who said, you know what, that's going to have value one day. You need to tax that as part of when the refineries use this product and take it off. The refineries, of course, said, there's no value. We don't use it for anything. Well, guess what? And so, petroleum coke byproduct is one, as we talked about a lot of things. But those two scenarios come before you ever get to what I think I hear Mr. Lacour saying, and that is looking to just find another provider, looking to get outside of the donut. And you really have to consider that real strongly when you get into this. Again, those are two scenarios before you get to the one he's talking about, and yet, both of those are perhaps less in value to your constituents and ratepayers than the one that's on the table. And that's what RW Beck was charged to do. I want to make this real clear to the folks here. There were at least two meetings in Orlando where they were questioned by me, most particularly by others, pretty, I would call it more like cross-examination, about looking for other alternatives. Anytime you're in a situation where the allegations that have been thrown around in this case occur, you're going to naturally want to say, okay, what alternatives in that relationship, just so you can be in a new one and not have to worry about it, regardless of who's right. You've made these claims. Think about it in your own lives, if you're with a business partner. Sometimes when you say enough things to each other, or maybe it's a partner in your life, there gets to be enough water under a bridge where you're not, it's hard to be back together, right? So, we looked at those alternatives. We looked at them long and hard. I was surprised to see how the alternatives stacked up. There were a lot of bets around the room. I remember Kay was with me, and I was about what would be the next least-cost alternatives. But when they came out, or they did, we made them look at them again. I really believed and had indicated to folks from the editorial... I really believed and had indicated to folks from the editorial board, to some of you in this room, that with the right thing happening at DG Hunter and using some of what Mr. LaCour has talked about, you could go out and find, remember, even if we did the DG Hunter upgrade, Mr. Lawson, we'd still need additional power out there. It would not solve all of our issues. I guess you could get certain size units and do it, ultimately, maybe you try to sell it back. Those are all very impractical things for our municipality at this time in its life to do. I realize the enormity of your decision tonight, gentlemen. I think that the folks working for you have tried to maximize the value to citizens in the settlement context. It's your decision ultimately on what you do. But I will tell you this, you could have meetings from here until time immemorial, and you're never gonna have a situation where the entire public of Alexandria gets up to speed on, and this isn't insulting to anybody, you're just not gonna have it happen. People aren't that interested. People want to get some basic answers, but they're not gonna go through the days and weeks, hundreds of hours of time that have been put into this. That task, fortunately, unfortunately, is left to you as elected officials to decide. I think that there are some real legitimate questions, and speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the council, ladies and gentlemen, I think for myself, I think this body has to make the decision about whether to settle or not. To settle or not to settle, that's the first question. And I don't think it is a preclusion to some of the other issues. I think Mr. LaCour raises some very important issues, and I think that he might make the point that some of the things you would do in this settlement could tie you down in some of the later decisions a little bit, or he may think a lot. Those are legitimate issues. I do think, speaking for myself, that this momentous decision could require additional and even binding public dialogue and decision on the issue of rebate. I don't think the administration would not pretend to be in a position to tell you whether you should get a rebate or not. This is different from a tax issue or a reallocation issue. This is money that was actually out of your pocket. Assuming our allegations are right, this is money you pay, that you earned and paid, and it's a pass-through, so it's not a general fund issue. It's not a general fund issue where it goes back into the corpus, this, you know, imaginary corpus or body of the general fund. But I'll tell you this, these guys all know that. And regardless of whether you see the council and the administration always getting along and moving through this, I will tell you that they are aware of this, that they're aware of the enormity of this decision, and that you have to come to a point where you start to figure out what will allow the most opportunities and avenues for all of you. I don't believe that the issue of rebates and how it circles out is foreclosed by this particular agreement in front of them. I don't. I think the $29 million question that Mr. LaCour asked is a very important one, and I heard Mr. Johnson answer it. You wouldn't have to necessarily do a letter of credit, Mr. Lawverdane. If you paid it out in increments, you wouldn't have to do it at all. I think Chuck stated that earlier, but sometimes you're answering these and you, everything comes together because the letter of credit would be designed if you took it all upfront. But you're not being loaned or borrowed something from them, you still have this $60 billion in value. $29 million, what it offers you is on a thing that has no value to you standing alone. DG Hunter capacity right now, and Pat, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't really have a significant value to the city sitting over there in a dormant plant like that. It just doesn't. And there's no, we can't call up energy and sell. No one's buying 13,000 E-Rate power from that deal over there.
And I know the man is passionate, but we're gonna, we're gonna close it and let him?
He did invoke me.
I understand. But we're gonna do invoke it if we give other people the talk, man.
I'm not saying he disagrees.
We're gonna let the mayor close his comments, then we have some more people.
The value that you're getting for this, in this scenario, is probably as much or more value, well, it's more value you'd ever get for DG Hunter, to still own it, to still have it there as an asset at the end of this contract. And so I think that people have to think about that. We have not told the administration, excuse me, the council, from our standpoint, you have to take this deal or it's the end of the world. We've never said that. They are going through what I would call our job, which is risk assessment. It's looking at all the alternatives and figuring out which alternative gives you the best value, gives you the most options on the back end, and has the least risk to you. If you look at this as the only acceptable risk is to go into court and prove what occurred, then that's what this council decided to do. We are prepared for the administrations in to litigate the case, if that's what the council wishes. We're prepared to finalize and do whatever we have to do in this agreement before we sign it. There are lingering issues about the letter of credit. Quite frankly, on a personal level and a business judgment level and a legal level, we have issues to resolve. But the council could still authorize this settlement subject to us getting through those issues if it chooses to.
That was one of my lingering questions, and I know we had some other lingering questions too, man.
There are some other lingering questions. So you do have those technical issues. I think that we still have to move through those technical issues before there is a decision on it. But look, this is what you do anytime. You are balancing against risk here. You are figuring out, there's uncertainty on one end of the scale, and there's the burden hand of certainty here, and you have to figure out, is that burden hand of enough value to you that you feel like you don't want to take those risks anymore? And that's what this council has to decide, and it is a tough decision, but I think it's one they're prepared to have. And Mr. Lawson, that's, I'm through with the statement on it, but I do want to say that we have these seven questions that came out, and I think that we are trying to do that.
And we'll have it for the public.
And we will read this into the record after the meeting and provide this in writing so that it can be placed into the record.
Thank you. Ms. Carrick is next. Questions on agreement. Ms. Rhonda Reed Carrick.
I have several questions, so I don't know if you want me to ask them all at once or stop and let them answer. But I will say this, one of the largest industrial users in the state happens to be Fort Polk. They happen to be served by Entergy on a CLECO line, and I don't believe the U.S. military would enter into any other type of agreement, except I believe you call it a firm agreement. And I believe if you discussed with Entergy 120 megawatts versus 10, you might get a different answer. So I wouldn't extrapolate the $10 million cost into the $120 million cost, having worked industrial projects with them. But that's not my question.
Ma'am, I'm afraid it, it's an engineering analysis, it's not an economic analysis. When you make a transmission application, you're required to perform a load flow study.
I understand all that, and I think we've discussed that enough.
No, ma'am, I don't think we have. You've posed a question, and I think the citizens are doing answer. And I think that answer is, it's an engineering analysis. If you ask to move 10 megawatts, and you look at the negative impacts on energy's transmission grids and the lines that become overloaded, as you increase the amount of power you're requesting to move, those overloads are only gonna grow. It's a mathematical model. It's not gonna, it's not, it's not an economy of scale.
And sir, you're going back to Entergy transmission lines. If you recall, I just opened my remarks by stating Entergy serves Fort Polk on a CLECO transmission line.
That's correct.
And they pay for the right to use that line.
That's correct, and that's all I've said, we would have to pay for the rights to use them.
Question two.
We are giving up the right to capacity generated at DG Hunter for $29 million. Is that correct?
If we, if we elect.
If we accept this.
If we elect, except in emergencies.
Okay, because that was one of my questions, what happens in a storm? Because we have relied on that to bring the city back online in two to four hours, and I don't want to see us. With respect to Road maker 3, are you saying under our current agreement, we would not have power access from Road maker 3? We would still be limited to accessing Road maker 2, the higher-cost power?
Unless, unless, because of the interaffiliate boundaries defined by Sarbanes-Oxley, unless CLECO wholesale entered into an agreement with CLECO's generating unit to purchase power off Road maker 3, that's correct, we will be limited to our solid fuel capacity through LEAP on Road maker 2.
Okay, so this goes against the fact that CLECO told the state when they got ready to sell the bonds that every single one of their customers would benefit from lower-cost power?
When they were referring to customers, they were, a customer to CLECO is a regulated retail rate base customer.
Okay, it's not a wholesale customer then. Are we eliminating fuel adjustment costs with this proposed agreement?
We're reducing them.
But not totally eliminating?
You'll never eliminate them.
Okay. This agreement, as I understood from watching last week, says we're being sold power at cost or at a below-market rate. So is it subject to approval by the PSC?
This agreement itself is not governed by the PSC, no. But it is, we can parallel some of their regulatory rights in that if CLECO wishes to raise the charges in this contract, the demand charges, that would have to be, we're now treated just like another retail customer. So they can't single Alexandria out and raise just Alexandria's charges. They have to raise their entire rate base, which is Alexandria plus the other, I think, 257,000 customers that they have.
Next question.
In the suit document, it states that the current agreement was dated May 19, 2003, and amended February 16, 2004, expiring the 16, 2009. On May 11, 2004, there was an agenda item up for final adoption for this body, which was not approved a second time. This ordinance was passed by unanimous consent. What did this amendment change? Why is it not referenced in the suit? How does it impact the current agreement and the proposal we've been given to review and comment on? And was it ever signed?
Are you going back to 2004?
I don't, I.
Okay. I'd like to see someone stand up and answer that question. It won't be me.
It has no relevance because the new agreement supersedes all addenda to those agreements and gets rid of, and indeed, that's desirable. All of the old great articles.
All right, my, why is councils raise their hand back there? Thank you, Ms. Carrick. I have Mr. Mike Goines, is that correct?
Michael Goines, sir.
Michael Goines, I'm sorry. I know Michael.
I'd like to say good evening everyone, um, pound, the new elected officials. There is a word called fiduciary responsibilities of elected officials for the citizens that voted, you know, for you or may have didn't vote for you. It is very important that you do what's right concerning, as the guy was saying about the Louisiana Constitution that governs rates of utility commissions, stuff like that, you know? I'm not a lawyer, it's hard to speak behind a lawyer, the mayor, and it's not a deadline. Who say what the civil outcome gonna reveal? It may be less than $60 million, maybe more. I mean, the citizens deserve due process of law. And by that, elected officials, you know, we charge all to see that this matter be given due process of law. Because as we see, a lot of people don't understand, everybody not on the same page. You know, when the brick was thrown at the wall's net, all the walls scattered, no one remained on the net. And I commend you for that because understanding is the best thing in the world when I got out of this situation tonight, and is that it's something like, wanna pass something out to the public without a clear understanding. And I'm saying that I think y'all need to give it more time besides trying to just finalize this deal before the year is out. I mean, what's wrong with another nine days, it's been gone, gone now for four years, you know, and you can look through the law books, they got thousands and thousands of cases like this here, like the city of Monroe, the city of New Orleans. Is that the first time it's happened, you know? Supply overcharged, these citizens? And I stand here, not so much for myself, but for the older people who had trouble paying those high rates, and how did the situation come about, like somebody was crying in the dark because they lost their jobs, or they turned whistle evidence on CLECO? So it's about the motives. What is y'all motive, elected officials? Y'all here to do the right thing, or y'all here just for style, or just to?
That's a good question.
Commemorate, call that political correctness? What about the old lady who can't pay her bill? The single mother who hasn't let her child go to school raggedy, you know, without sufficient, you know, means? Or they was cut off, you know, it's got to be meaning to snatch them out the box, it's a whole, I'm gonna say it's gonna be quite uncloaked, they say that the purpose of the legislature is vested with wide discretion in determining what is public interest and what matters, that they say to protect the public interest. And that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Goines.
You said a lot, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Goines.
You said a lot.
I see Reverend, have any of that, Reverend Green?
Thank you, good sir. Mayor, thank you for giving me that $60 million value. Now I know how much I should be looking toward in the future, but a couple questions. Is this the only offer that CLECO have made the city?
There have been, there have been many, this is a mediation process, so there's been a lot of back and forth, and I'm gonna yield to our counsel, Mr. Johnson.
Reverend Green, the way we came about this is that typically, week to week, we would outline the issues that we believe we needed to discuss and that we needed to resolve as part of an overall settlement. So what would happen is, say if you take one particular issue.
I can't see that page from here.
I'll just, I'll just pick one.
Okay.
I'll just pick one, the assignment issue. What we would do is, we would draft language, we'd send that to CLECO, they would either accept it, reject it, or send alternative language. And we did that for all 81 pages of this entire document. The whole process took us nearly a year. But the document itself, when you consider all the different sections, all of the different provisions, resolve the allegations that are in the lawsuit.
Okay, so you helped me. So you said at the end of the day, after all of the?
So there was never any number of offers from CLECO. There was never, CLECO never said, hey, Chuck Johnson, this is the power supply agreement, either the council's gonna take it or they're not. They never did that. It was always a give-and-take process. The document that's in front of us today for the council to consider is the culmination of all those negotiations.
Okay, so at the end of the day, with our brightest and best minds for the city, you are saying to us, this is the best we could do, and we want you to accept it.
What I'm saying to you is that for the past two years, the council and the mayor have given me access to the best minds in the country. They've also given me the resources to hire the best minds in the country. RW Beck, John Adragnan, Brazil Saxi, my staff, myself, Kaye McGill's, David Crutchfield, Mike Marcock, the mayor, all of us worked on this document. And I believe that what you see in front of you today is, in my professional judgment, an excellent agreement.
Okay, so I'm complete agree. You're saying at the end of the day, this is our very best that we ask the council to, and we recommend to the council for the citizens. That's all I ask.
I think that's kind of a political question, but do I think this is?
Yeah, please.
A good agreement? In my professional judgment, speaking as a lawyer, I would say yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilman Silver.
Along with this, I don't speak in the vernacular of some of these intricate things, but I look at it this way, all the things that were brought out tonight, it's amazing. If you were with us when we first heard this here and then in Lake Charles, we were just as desperate as you and you, just trying to figure out what is great. Finally, they said, what do you think of a figure X? He said, gee, that would be wonderful. That figure is here, we settled here. Coupled with the doctors, I call the doctors Beck, and I also call Adragno from Washington. They are experts, and they told us what to do. And if, as I said, if you need religious help, you go see Reverend Green. He'll probably put you in pretty good shape. If you need it legal work, you go to a lawyer. If you go sick, you go to a doctor. And if you don't believe it, don't go. I can use it, I think I can reduce it. We have 24,000 rate payers. We collectively have to, we keep saying, some constituents, they might hear from 10, 20, 30, 40 constituents, usually the ones who speak the loudest. But the proponents of the people do not say much, but we have to do what's good for the maximum people in here. Now, we're looking, I'm happening to be chairman of the Economic Development Group and the council. If we can say to people that we have a 14-year window of very, very favorable rates comparable to none in a state, I think that's a plus. It makes economic sense, and therefore, this phase of it, I would like very much to suggest be approved on that basis. I think it's a sound approach.
Councilman Lawverdane.
This case started out as a fraud case. At this point, we don't know whether or not fraud exists or it doesn't exist. But I've been on the council for about a month. I've talked to experts. Some of the experts have been vague, confusing. And a lot of times, I look at what's the best news in this city. At this point, there's so many unanswered questions, so many issues out there. People are concerned about what about this, what about that? At this point, in my heart, I can't vote this proposal. Because I've got to make sure the gentleman, I've got to make sure that Big Mama can pay her utility bill. I've got to make sure everybody in this city has lights. If you look at District 1, I've got a district where folks are barely living. They are struggling every day. We have to take this very careful. This is important. This is 13 years of a contract. If we have any problems, folks are going to be hurt. We've talked to y'all on two occasions. There's so many, so many confused eyes, so many confused looks. We have to look at this very carefully to make sure this is what the people want and make sure we're doing what we're required to do. Within, since being on the council for one, for one month, I've heard so many stories, this, that, that. But at this time, I've got to look at my heart and say, hey, I don't feel comfortable with this, because there's so many variables. You all are asking so many questions and say, well, what about this, what about that? We have to make sure that we look in our hearts to make sure this is right, because we got to live with it. We're getting in, we're getting in bed with CLECO again, years ago, they took advantage of us. Are we sure this is the right thing to do? Here. This is serious, because we're paying exorbitant bills. I've had two or three clients call me about a $600, $700 utility bill. We have to make sure it's done right. It's serious out there. We're in a recession. It's real out there. People are catching hell. I've got a lot of clients with no electricity. It's the holiday season. It is tight out there. So we're going to take this serious. This is not something to play around with. This is serious. When I ran for this office, I knew it was important because I was going to make a difference. I want to make sure that the council understands that people are struggling. We have to put them first at all cost. And we have to look carefully in our hearts to make sure this is the best deal we can get. Because once we're, once we're accepted now, it's over. The game is over. We get the 29 million or the 60 million that may be there, may not be there. We have to make, we have to look in our hearts to make sure this is the right thing to do. There may be some more money down the road, we don't know. But if we settle, it's a wrap. So you better make sure this is what you want, because this is what the people expect us to do, to make the best call, because they're paying these exorbitant bills. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman, you have other questions? Okay. Mr. LaCour, one more.
I agree with Mr. Lawverdane. I think we need to wait. I think other people have said it eloquently, and I just want to enter this into the record. I did some quick math on this. If you sign this deal tonight, you're going to lock in a whopping less than 7% savings on the existing contract, okay? Using what the administration put together in their PowerPoint, over the next 12 years, they value the existing arrangement at about $850 million. They say they'll save you $58 million. You divide those, you divide the 58 by the 850, you get less than 7%. So if you sign the deal tonight, you're locking in a whopping 7%. Now, I've asked people in the administration about Abbeville, I just want to get this last thing in on the record. Abbeville is now a CLECO customer. They were not always a CLECO customer. They used to be with LEPA. I called Mayor Mark Piazza today, when I talked to him. They decided to go out in 2005 and bid. They put out an RFP to various, to five providers. They got three responses back. CLECO happened to be the best provider. Some people here may not want CLECO. I don't care who we get. I just don't think until you have bid out and explored all your options, that you're going to get the best deal. In Abbeville, our fuel rate on this month's bill for City Valider customers, the fuel rate, not the, not the standard cost, right? The fuel rate was nine cents a kilowatt hour. In Abbeville, they pay five cents a kilowatt hour, okay? That's the kind of savings I would like to see. In fact, I wouldn't even take five cents. I'd take seven cents. But if, if it's good enough for Abbeville, and CLECO can give that to Abbeville, then maybe the city should be pushing for something like that. And those rates are fixed. CLECO can't cheat the city of Abbeville. Abbeville only, only charges them five cents by contract. So they don't have to watch, Abbeville does not have to watch CLECO like a hawk. They're just going to get their five cents. So Mr. Silver said that this deal gives you non-comparable rates in the state. Mr. Silver, Abbeville has non-comparable rates compared to us. We can't touch Abbeville's rates under the existing agreement or the new agreement. I appreciate you letting me speak again.
I would like to hear response to that.
Mr. Lawson.
Okay.
I'd like to hit-
Mr. Marquette.
I'd like to answer Mr. LaCour's second question first. I direct your attention back to this spreadsheet that was provided from CLECO's Trading Group. And this is for the power that they purchased the city for today. And as Mr. LaCour said, Abbeville paid five cents today. That's a kilowatt hour. Power is traded in megawatts, multiply that number by 1,000, that's $50 a megawatt hour. CLECO bought us power today, right here, at one point, for $29. So who had the better deal today?
Now, you would not, you would not, no, 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 no.
At the end of the month, I'll take five cents over.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We're not getting into debate, okay? Go ahead.
They, one element of their power was 29 cents. Look at this block here, 37.50. This block here, 42.37. Those are all, so today, in these market purchases, even under the existing contract, there was a small element slightly above that, probably about, off the top of my head, 8% or less of our demand for the day, that was higher than that 50 cents. But our, add these numbers up today, we beat that five cents today. So Abbeville, I wonder if I sent this down to Mayor Piazza, what he would think about his fixed price deal today?
Okay.
It's a public record.
All right.
That's all, Mr. Lawson.
I think time has been well spent. That's going to conclude this public hearing portion of today's meeting. We're on item number five. Madam Plurk, will you read that item?
Consider final adoption to execute power supply agreement and all ancillary contracts and documents necessary to implement the council-approved memorandum of understanding between the city and CLECO Corporation in furtherance of the complete settlement of all claims and disputes in the litigation styled City of Alexandria versus CLECO Corporation Number 05-1121A.
I move.
It's been moved by Mr. Fowler properly, seconded by Mr.-
Mr. Chairman. Silver. Discussion, Councilman Goines.
Division, please.
Bit? Okay. We have a call for division of the House, which means we're going to get a roll call.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Lawverdane.
No.
Mr. Goines.
No.
Mr. Silver.
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President, you have five yays and two noes, and the ordinance passes.
Okay. We go now to item number 24. Do we have a motion?